Start the tape.
All right, it is uh seven twenty four twenty twenty four at seven oh six P M. This is the zoning board of appeals. We're holding our meeting remote. And I am Paul Scheiner, the chair. And we have with us. Uh let's go through the I the uh in the what do you call it introductions page. Say something please.
Hi, everyone. Sorry to take myself off mute. I am a page superior vice chair.
And John.
John Corville, uh member of the Z B A.
Leslie.
Hello, everyone.
And Jerry.
Jerry Calvert, board member.
And we have Bill Nemser from town of Maynard as the town planner and. What what's your role here, Bill? Keep us in line person?
Yeah, I'm kinda like the bouncer.
Okay, and and we have Brian Winter with us. He is town council for tonight. And we will get into our administrivia. And the first one which caught me by surprise today is something called election of chair.
Oh.
So I don't know anything about an election of chair except that's what I'm supposed to be.
Yeah, every every fit beginning of every fiscal year, uh board elects a a chair and a vice chair. And we also at the end will tag on a uh vote uh if uh to allow the chair to sign. Decisions whoever the chair may end up being. But uh the way we would do this is open it up for nominations and um. And uh go from there.
All right. Does anybody wanna nominate anybody?
All right, I nominate you. I nominate Paul Scheiner as chair.
For yeah, another term, I suppose. Okay.
I second that.
Any any other nominations? Silence is deafening, as I say.
Hmm.
So. All right, I suppose we need a vote. Paige?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry? So I think that's four.
Yes, yes, uh Jerry, yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So that 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 means I guess I got my foot in a trap for another year.
Mm hmm.
You do.
All right, so now we have vice chair. And I'd like to nominate Paige.
Second.
All right. John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well. So Paige, you're stuck too.
Thanks, everyone.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Um now, Mr. Chair, the one vote I would ask the board to take. Uh we do it every year just to keep it nice and tidy. Um that uh I'll explain just for the board when we do decisions. Uh some boards allow just the chair to sign, so I don't have to drag you all in. And uh to sign and I uh find that much simpler. So I would request that the the chair consider uh. Holding a vote to allow the chair to sign decisions on behalf of the board.
Do I get a motion to that?
Make a motion.
Oh, go ahead. I'll move to or make a motion to allow the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All right. So Paige?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Good, thank you. And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
So the the next item, right? We're we're done with.
Yep.
Electing the next one.
Now, I think we have minutes.
Right, to approve the minutes of last. Last uh month.
Yeah, six uh twenty sixth.
Thank you. Twenty sixth of June. So. Has everybody reviewed them? Any comments, corrections?
I have to confess that I did not read them, so I will not vote.
So we gotta be careful. We gotta get a unanimous otherwise then if you're going abstained.
Well.
I think we can do with three.
All right.
Yeah, because it's not a um. It's not a state statute vote. Yeah, so if I can get three uh. Voters. Well, I I would have four anyway.
Yeah, so uh did we get a motion on that?
I'll move to approve the minutes of June twenty six twenty twenty four.
Excellent.
A second.
Uh Jerry, okay. Any further comment? Okay, Paige?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Abstaining.
All right, Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, our applicant uh has not shown up for the first item. We do have the. Um applicant for the second item if it's the board's pleasure, but I'll let the I defer to the chair to point to how to uh. Wishes to reorder the agenda. Keep or you can proceed. Brian, is there any? Do you see any issue if the applicant doesn't show up with the board go ahead and opening? Hearing if they chose so?
No, so the if you wanna reach that item now, or or if you wanna hold off on it, we can talk about it when you reach it, but. Um you're gonna have a couple options, right? You can continue uh in their absence, or you could just vote to continue it to another night. And and essentially kick it over uh to find out why they're not here and if they're gonna appear again. But you're not any under any obligation to do that. So you could just continue your business in the absence of the applicant, but if. It it puts you in an awkward position, right? Because if you don't have a proponent of the application. Um, you know, what's the board to do if you have no one advocating for the application? So uh if you wanna take the other one, obviously I defer to to your judgment. You wanna take the other one first and just see what happens um. You know, when we get through the first or actually second on your your list, but the other matter. Um we could circle back and see where we're at. You wanna deal with it right now? Um I'm happy to to start talking to you about it right now.
I I think we just moved to the the second hearing that we have tonight. Um because remember last last month, uh. Our second applicant tonight had electronic issues. And we gave him the benefit of the doubt and just moved on. And that could be the case for our first applicant tonight, that there could be some complication with her signing in. So let's just move on to the second applicant here. This is the application of One Powder Mill Road, the BP gas station. Where and I noted we had continued it from the June twenty six twenty twenty four. Uh, meeting. It is an application filed by the business. By the business owner, uh Wu Se Chang, One Powder Mill Road, Maynard. The subject property, One Powder Mill Road, is an existing BP gas station locate located in the downtown mixed-use overlay district. With underlying zoning in the business district per sections three dot two dot three. And ten dot two of the protective zoning bylaws, the applicant is seeking a special permit. Approval to allow overnight storage of more than one commercial vehicle not exceeding twenty five thousand G B W. Parentheses, it's a U-Haul uh business option at the subject property. And so uh the applicant is with us here. And so, Mr. Chang, if you could explain what you wanna do, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um uh good evening, the board members. Um, my name is Woo Sub Chang. I'm usually I go by Gio. And um this is my first gas station having in Maynard. And then um since two thousand nineteen, right before COVID. I started the business there and then I've been very happy with the location, people and town. And it's a surrounding towns, so. Um, I'm very happy. And then now, we're looking forward expanding our business. Having some um U-Haul trucks. So that um you know, we can draw more people um. And then who probably um you know, make some um activity in town and uh because we noticed a lot of. Um outside people coming in for renting truck and returning truck. Um but there was one before in Maynard, but they're out of business, so um the chance came to us. But we'd like to um optimize that business opportunity. So that um you know, I can do more business for the towns and the town will welcome uh other. Outside town visitors. And then uh we have been doing the gas station business, not knowing how long it is, but. I had no idea like it wasn't like it properly permitted until I had a U-Haul truck business. And then um now uh through Bill Nemser, um I'm just gonna do the right thing to apply for the proper permit. But um if I understand correctly, I'd like to do um uh improve. The business environment as town wants, but this is my very first time. What town really wants? And then we'd like to keep the business as good as possible. So um you know, besides storing trucks. On the land, if there's any concerns, then um I'd like to hear. From the board and we'd like to uh make it happen.
Okay, in in your application package. You had talked about a convenience store. Are you still talking about a convenience store or you're just talking about the trucks?
Trucks and convenience store. The the um the building itself is very small and we used to have one cooler. Um and some uh window wash fluid fluid, but um. It's we're not selling it now, but we still have food permit there. So the convenience store is still active and we're um kind of ranging some stuff inside. Once it gets done, then we're gonna have a coolers. I contacted the Coca-Cola um. The providers, but they haven't got me back yet, so um it's still up in the air.
So so the 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 thought for you is to be able to rent the U-Haul trucks and to have a convenience store?
Yes.
Okay. Bill, is that what you were thinking as we started going through this, that he's gonna do the convenience store and the U-Haul?
Let me, yeah, let me, let me clear this up. A right now, the current use is a convenience store with a filling station.
Oh, it is.
Yes. Right, um that when he uh. If I can, Mr. Chair, I'll give you a little more background about this and I can explain it. So the the applicant has been, as he's mentioned, took over the business in the early nineties, but uh this business has been. Uh located there for like a hundred years. It's been there quite a while as a gas station and uh has a a small convenience store um. As part of the operation. Um, right now, any changes to the convenience store involving expansion. Uh of the building would be that would require a separate hearing? That's not what we're talking about here for this board. He's already entitled to have the gas station with the um with the convenience store and the existing footprint. Uh, in this case, we don't have a category that specifically. Um is for rental vehicles. Uh but we do have a category that's for overnight storage of commercial vehicles. Uh, this uh originally came to the town's attention. Uh because when the when the first U-Haul arrived uh at the uh. Location, there was no um, they 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 were not aware that they had to be permitted for this use. So uh Town Hall has been working with Mr. Chang. He's been very cooperative trying to um. Get permitted correctly and um. The the way this project would be permitted uh would have to be permitted is through the zoning board of appeals. Um rather than the planning board, it just that's the way that the um. The bylaws uh are are written to uh regulate a fuel distribution facility. Um, the special permit in this case, I'm gonna share the screen in a minute. Here, let's uh share it and I'll. Just to help the board because it's a little different. I have one um. I do this with the planning board a lot, but not so much with the zoning board. But this is involving um. I I you know, we always have our special pride permit criteria which we go through right here. And um. We um. Let's see here, uh getting some background noise here somewhere. Um, but the difference is while we will have to go through and 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 ensure we've considered all the permit criteria. Uh we also will have to uh use the uh downtown overlay district criteria. As one of the um. Components of any potential approval. And that has a couple of conditions that this board has not had as much experience as perhaps some of the other boards. So that's why I thought it might help if um. You know, I I I wrote them out. We went through them when it's time, when the board wants to. And um Chair Chris Arsoff of the Planning Board um is on as well, who um. I asked him just to come in. I just if anybody had questions. That about how other boards evaluated downtown overlay district criteria, I thought it might be of help. It's just it's up to the board. But so well, that's what you're looking for. Um, and and in the end, uh kind of what we do typically with the. Decision, but then we're also um. Looking at the downtown overlay uh district criteria.
Hmm.
Nothing like making it more complicated.
Well.
I I on your downtown overlay criteria, I find section C fascinating. That it must include one of the following. And simply parking trucks on there is nothing of any of those six items.
Well, it 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 you I could see your point now. The way we would look at this in other boards. You're right, the truck does not. But it does. Uh it it. It we we would say that um. It improves functioning of the downtown area. And in that case, uh having this uh a uh rental uh auto or truck rental. Where we don't have one currently. That that helps, that's gonna help our our town. We don't have a U-Haul at the moment anyway. Uh providing a significant improvement to the pedestrian experience, the truck might not. You're right, the truck might not, but perhaps the applicant could uh come up with a significant improvement. Or that that does uh enhance pedestrian experience. And that's what I'm gonna ask the applicant to discuss in a little bit.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Shang, do you have anything else to add or are we relying on Bill to? Sort of figure out what it is he wants for the town? You're you're unmuted, sorry.
I muted you, I'm sorry.
Oh. Yeah, um previously, we had um a couple of opportunities to have a conversation with Bill about. To understand how uh we apply for this special permit under what provisions. And then uh we looked at it and um this is the like already existing um business there for. Uh the decades, if it's not centuries. But um still, we'd like to add um the rental truck rental business there. And it will help the people to come around and uh look around the downtown. It will get exposed to the lot of people. Because uh we noticed the number of cars visiting the gas station has increased, especially summertime over the weekend, starting from Friday. Um and driving from Florida, California, then they dropping the trucks, they have to come to the Maynard. Because we open twenty four, um not twenty four, it's available twenty four, seven days. Because we open seven days a week, so it's a great location. Some other places they close after five P M or six P M, so they kind of let into this location, so. We see a lot of people with the families and they come around together, so we get um. To probably can boost forward pedestrian um experience about the downtown, like town of Maynard gets focused on it.
Okay. You had in your application a. Uh building plan or a a lot plan with a bunch of marks for trucks.
Yes.
Could you or Bill put that up so we can talk about your design for how many trucks and where you're gonna stash them and so on and so forth?
I'll pull it up unless it's easy for you, Joe, is it?
Yeah.
Let's see here, let me. Unless you have it handy. Okay. There we go.
Yeah, that that one, I remember seeing that and I was. I was trying to figure out because you've got a lot of shaded markers that I'm thinking they're all trucks. So.
Yeah.
Help me out, please.
Yes, so um. We we um. We asked for the U-Haul, you know, to have a couple of trucks. If there is a many trucks, then we can ask the um regional office for the transfer to other location, but um. Since we start this one, we didn't have any overflow problems, but. Basically, this is how we figure it out, like having three trucks in the back of the left side. And another like three trucks here uh in the front row, on the right side. That's that's where underground storage tank is, so that we have to empty it so that um the gas delivery. Carrier can come and access to the gas drops. And then there's a dumpster, so this is not um intended to have like overnight stories of trucks.
So how many how many trucks, how many trucks would you store overnight? I have a hard time figuring out what what is the overnight story.
There'll be about seven.
Maximum of seven?
Maximum seven, right. We we could fit in like ten or eleven. But. About seven. Three, four, five, six. And then one behind the. Building. Yeah.
It's hard to draw with this.
Right.
I was smarter myself. All right, anyway.
Yeah, anyway, we got it. Okay.
Yeah, but technically, six and seven. We like to avoid the parkings there because that's where um. Where uh the underground storage tank is. So six and seven is for daytime operation only when the customer comes for pickup truck or return for inspection. That's where they can temporarily park there. Then after inspection. We, our employee moves six and seven trucks to four and five location for eight location.
Okay, so you're saying that you could handle overnight six vehicles. And then two that are just coming and going.
Right, right. On the right side, it's for um pickup and like a process. But the yeah, the parking will be on the left side, one, two, three, four, five. Technically, there's a six cars between four and five. There's another truck can fit in. And um one or two behind the back.
All right.
It will be that corner square.
Now, I looked at the the U-Haul website to figure out truck sizes. And they do have one of them that is quite a bit larger than the twenty five thousand G B W.
Yeah, that 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 doesn't, we try to avoid it. So whenever he comes, get dropped and then we ask the regional office to get it transferred to somewhere.
And so would there be a chance that that extra large one would stay overnight here?
Maybe one overnight if they drop it after hours. And then uh the next day, usually go out, we we request, we put a request.
All right, because what we're looking for, you're looking for here is a permit for overnight storage of more than one vehicle.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, we would put a limit on the total number and we would put a limit on the G B W.
Okay.
And so if you end up with these large vehicles. You you need to have a way to get rid of them before nightfall or overnight.
Yeah, we usually request to the regional office in which is located in Methuen.
Okay.
Yeah, and then they usually send the driver or the vehicle so that they can move around.
Uh, Geo, if I may, Mr. Chair, I I think um what the the chair wants to make clear uh. Is that in the event the board did. Opt to issue a permit, there's very likely going to be. Uh a requirement that no vehicles in excess of twenty five thousand square feet. Remain on the on the property for whatever they decide, whether it's before night or twenty four hours or whatever. So it would be and it would be very important to make sure that the parent office. Recognizes that 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 would put the permit out of compliance. Okay, so yeah. I would just to be clear, thank you.
Okay. So, I mean, we've been trying uh to make it clear to the main office in Arizona and the regional office in Methuen. Um but sometimes the customer, they. Change their destination. Sometimes they find this location because they like to come the nearest. Um dealer to drop when they move in. So sometimes uh when the morning comes and when we come to work and then sometimes we find the trucks drop right there. So we. We cannot really stop. The people, the customers drop in the trucks overnight when we're not there, but as soon as we find, we put a request. You know, to send them over, but I'm not sure if that counts as overnight because they come in and um all in the morning. Um but they don't really, we try not to have not to have the truck over twenty four hours or like more than hours.
All right.
Usually the longest one, twenty six footer, takes like number one and four.
Oh, big truck.
Yeah, yeah. The other than that, one, two, three is the right size, so two trucks. In one row, but twenty six footers takes two spaces.
Now, now you say that big truck, is that an over twenty five thousand or is that just a long bed?
The only but that's over twenty five thousand, I noticed.
All right.
But that's the one we like to get rid of because that's too big.
Yeah. Are you doing trailers or just trucks?
Trucks and little trailers too.
So how many little trailers do you anticipate?
Well, we anticipate no, but sometimes the customer, they drop it. So anytime, every time we get it, we ask the regional office to move it over.
Okay. I think I understand what you're looking for. I'll open it up to other board members. Any questions, comments, suggestions, help, please? Uh, Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, so my so my understanding then. Uh. And and I am supportive of 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 where the owner was trying to go with this. So my understanding in is if the gas station closes at. Say eight P M uh and a. A person comes with their truck, they did the delivery, they're dropping off one of the twenty six footers at ten thirty P M.
Mm hmm.
The employees come in to work the next morning at seven A M, they find a large truck, they're gonna call to get it taken off property. So to me, that's an overnight storage. Am I correct? That that in everybody's interpretation, I just wanna make sure that it it may not have been an intentional overnight storage. But it is overnight storage. Am I correct?
I would say you're correct, yes.
Okay. Now, that's it. I just wanted to double check on that.
Leslie?
Thank you.
Um, do we need to talk about screening uh? From.
That's part of the.
Visual screening.
Yeah, that that's part of the story here, and that's what I think Bill was teasing us with his blue lines on that diagram.
Mm hmm.
But I I I wanted to focus on the truck question first before we get on all the nuances of making it look pretty.
Mm hmm.
So uh John is waving at us. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so my question is, is there a. A limit on how do you stop people from just continually dropping off overnight? I mean, someone drops off a twenty-six footer and then someone drops off two of the trailers and then someone drops off three trucks and then your pumps are blocked and you're just dropping things off.
Well, um that's kind of, it has like a bright side and dark side. Happens, and the business booming, so that's okay. But um I never seen that kind of, because we have uh the system, so we know which cars come in or not. But sometimes, unknown to us, they change at the last minute and they come back. Otherwise, you know, no customer would do it because they still get bills for the hours they rented. So as soon as they return, they hit hit it. So at any time in the the next morning at seven o'clock, we come, then we turn on the computer and then we see it. And then we see like what time it was returned. And then we ask the regional office to take this one back because, you know, we're limited and then the gas is our primary business. So we're in the cooperation stage, so if that happens, as John mentioned. Um or we we kind of think to have some signs like, you know, just let the people know, and the U-Haul already already have some like remarks on my site. But no one seemed to read it. So it's still there, no park on the on the storage tank side. But no, not really, no people would take care of that one. So every time we come, then we just kind of handle all the situation. So so but I mean, we haven't had any kind of um uh Right.
So so silly question here, but if the client can't read the fine print and gives you a truck at the wrong time, so you have an extra overnight vehicle, can you charge him an extra day's rent?
Can I charge the customer? Uh no, once they hit like a return, then U-Haul Arizona, you know, stop billing.
Oh, that's disappointing.
Yeah, and then we have to figure it out like how we go. So we kind of squeeze our regional office because we're number one or number two, we were number one in the sales wise in this region. So, you know, I just tell them like this is how I have to comply compliant with town, otherwise I can't do the business here. So don't give me a hard time, so now we're in the good stage. Because from the beginning, because they didn't hear anything like this from other towns. But when they, when I raised this issue to them. They couldn't understand what I'm talking about. But now they seem to know the town of Maynard has a little bit more of restrictions on the overnight parking of the commercial vehicle. So they understand, and then if I get, they know I I have a hearing like this. And then um you know, as soon as I get the um result from here, now I'll let them know. Hey, this is a strict requirement from the town and, you know, I'm in full support of the town of Maynard decision. So, you know, they'll, I think they will do it, they'll do what I ask them. Um they don't ignore or disregard my request. So um if anything happens, and then tha- that's the proposal I have at the maximum, like seven, but sometimes I do find. Um because some customers request, like Acton, Safari, um somewhere in Framingham. They come to get a truck, then we have to have the truck the night before so that they can rent it down all in the morning. And then if that happens, if the truck number is little, then that's fine, if it's too much, then we send them to other location. They will go to other site, but they they prefer to come to Maynard for a reason. So um we kind of look them, we don't tell them like this is town policy, but show them like this is limited, very tight space. It's not safe for you guys, but you're more than welcome to get the truck and rent return here if we have space allowed. So that's how we coordinate now.
Okay, what, Bill, can you put that map up again? Yeah. So what I'm wondering is, you've got a maximum of eight locations to store a truck. If we start looking at what is a reasonable number of trucks for you to have on a maximum regular basis. I would say it's a number less than eight.
Yes, it's max eight, because in the building, we can fit two vehicles, two van.
Yeah, so if if we start looking at what is a reasonable maximum number on a regular basis. Um I'm gonna ask the other board members to think about this, but is six a reasonable number to have in the under twenty-five thousand G V W size? Does that work?
Yeah, if I may, but I would like to have eight vehicles.
Eight, this is overnight storage?
Yes, maximum eight, but that doesn't mean we're gonna have eight vehicles all the time.
So you want eight, you won't, you won't like to have it less than eight?
Eight, yes.
Because you're saying six and seven are not in good position, so you have to move them, but there's no place to move them.
Well, so one, two, three, there is another vehicle, because I mean, this is the brief drawing when I started the business. But now, we know where, how we organize the vehicles, one, two, three, four, five, and there's another vehicle fit in between four and five. And then um there's eight, but actually, this eight, the desk space is like two trucks fit there. So eight has two vehicles behind the building. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people to fit in this corner.
And you're you saying eight, is that what you're using or experiencing now, that you're having eight overnight?
Yes.
And so if somebody wanders in with one of those super large ones, those twenty-six footers, and you already have eight vehicles on site. And he's dropping off one of those big ones, where's he gonna put it?
So then, then if we know, we contact regional office in Methuen, take the truck out of my site. And then if it's like after our drop, then the next day we come and find, we contact them, take it out.
So part of your permit you're looking for then is the permission to have more than eight for one night. Right, you'll have the eight and then the random drop that happens.
Well. So the I think that goes back to what John mentioned. One night. Maybe three customers return a truck. It never happened, but but let's say if three customers drop the vehicle here, and then we already have eight vehicles. I'm not sure if that happens, maybe something like we have to set eleven vehicle, but but we don't know if it's really gonna happen, but eight vehicles, when we have it, eight is the maximum um numbers to have the trucks without impeding any gas customers come and goes. And other um like dispatch and return trucks on the side.
Alright. So if that extra truck comes in, they just park it next door at Jiffy Lube, right?
That, oh, sometimes the truck goes there for maintenance, too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're in uh like a like a not intended business partner, but that's how it works out. The U-Haul pays directly to Jiffy Lube for oil change and other services. So sometimes they allow us to park there for um uh if they, the parking situation is allowable. But uh I I I personally, I haven't seen it, but that's how it goes. Like they put our vehicle on the like a last priority for oil change. So we um we brought, we bring our truck there and then at their convenience, they change the oil and then they bring it the bill to us and then it goes to the U-Haul, that's how it works.
Alright. So you see the the channels I have for our members, do you have any suggestions? Just on the number of trucks for this permit, under twenty-five thousand, number over twenty-five thousand. And this is for overnight storage, during the day, we have no comment, it's only storing overnight. Can we pick a number out of the hat? Go ahead, Jerry, help me out.
What I'm thinking, and and I don't like to restrict a business at all. But if we restricted the overnight to six. I'm I'm not sure how to even phrase that one, but if it was restricted to six, and then if the seventh and eighth showed up. There would at least be room for that, but if it was planned for seven or maybe eight, and then the ninth and tenth showed up. That's a potentially a major problem. I I I don't know if I'm I'm going at that the right way, but I was kind of looking at having a more uh a a a smaller footprint taken up that is the approved number. With and and on how we write in an exception. I I'm not saying that the odd night doesn't come that two other vehicles show up. I wouldn't want the cust- the the uh the owner to be restricted and say that just, you know, he's gonna get arrested now for for having two more vehicles. But but how can we limit it to to six? And then have an exception moving up as and and never to exceed eight or something like that. I I'm not sure of the wording, but that would be a direction I would suggest.
I I like that, Jerry, because what I'm thinking is uh it would give the owner some impetus to clean out those extra trucks greater than six before he goes home each night.
Jerry, you're saying no more than eight overnight vehicles.
That's what it sounds like. That's sort of what I'm saying, is that I think then it keeps the property looking neater and more uniform. And and again, I I don't really wanna see a business get restricted, but you know.
And that would be regardless of size.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly. That's my thought.
Hey, Gio, following up on that, may I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Um, should we let Bill ask your question?
It's following up on Jerry's, that's the only reason.
Yeah, uh go ahead, Bill.
Um, did you say, Gio, six and seven are not working out, correct, for parking? So, right now that we have it written there, would would that, that was a designated return area? That be possible?
So you, Bill, you're asking the politician, right, not me?
Yeah, uh well, anybody who's listening, that has an idea. I'm thinking that if six and seven don't work for um, you know, where we want a vehicle. Cause if somebody's in the middle of the night, I I understand that, you know, he's not gonna be there to to park it. But if it was a designated parking area or some, even if it wasn't where six and seven is, but something like that. And then in the morning, if somebody came in and it was in the way, the person just moves it back there and it's out, hopefully out of sight or less uh obtrusive, just a thought.
Yeah, no, yeah, I think I think we're we're focusing in on the same kind of solution. And I'm wondering if some signage would say, return truck here. And if that sign is blocked because a truck is already there, tough luck on the client, he has to go somewhere else or come back tomorrow.
Yeah.
Does that, does that make sense, Mr. Chang?
Yes, that that happened once, and the customer wasn't very happy. And then he was calling um the headquarters in Arizona about like how the business was kind of unfair or deceiving, as he described. But we told him, um hey, your return was late, later than what he's supposed to bring it in. So we couldn't accept the vehicle, so you took it over to um his house and then he came back in the next morning. So you got extra six or eight hours more charge. So, you know, whenever that happens, we have to deal with that. But if the board approves, like, there's a little room or bumper uh for having little bit of overflow vehicle for certain amount of time, then we can ease the people so that we can please them to happily they come back again too. And then we can, that uh if we see is the rental schedule, and then if everything goes out on that day, then no, no no crowded trucks will be parked overnight the following night. So everything will be um solved out like that. So when we see a lot of truck, sometimes I worry about like how how are we gonna have all this truck? And then my employee says, Mr. Chang, everything goes out today, so that's fine. Then it goes to one way, or sometimes we call it in town, returns back to my station. But every, like, one way one goes to everywhere. So um as I demo- like I just demonstrated on the paper, eight vehicle, ideally, when we have idle business and when we have trucks in park, eight vehicle. But ideally, I don't wanna see the truck sitting in my dealers. So everything will be going around on the road, so that's ideal situation. But because this is the permit process, I had to draw something to explain like how we can assist store trucks in the limited space. So um that's how I drew it.
Well, if the board does opt to uh issue a permit, you'll have a copy of that permit. And that would have everything spelled out in it.
Okay, so maybe the eight vehicle, that's where I draw on the corner, starting from the right side of the building, the front of the building to the left side to the Jiffy Lube. That's where I like to um restrict the vehicles so that when I go there to get the gas. I don't see any trucks sticking their nose up too close. So that's how I feel as a customer wise, so I, that's my policy to have all the trucks in the back, then eight trucks is the number. Sometimes when people drops, they use on the right side, right side, it's 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 big enough. But we don't like to have trucks sitting on top of the tank. So, but if it's a couple of hours, that's fine. So the next day, we come in at seven o'clock, we find the truck and then we move it. So that's for our safety too, for environmental concerns. So that's how we arrange it, but um it's one or two truck, e- especially for the moving season. You know, sometimes John or Jerry mentioned, like, we cannot really stop the trucks coming and get dropped at the station. But the next day, we kind of resolve it and then we see the schedules, because people sees online, truck comes in, return and then when the people sees the truck is available, then they come, so it's like automatically connected. So you'll go, um but maybe by the definition of overnight, I can ask the regional office to have a return only after midnight, so it's probably the next day. If that's um
I I like that idea, but I wouldn't stay after midnight, I would say after six A M. Cause when when you normally show up for business, it's uh six or seven in the morning, right?
Yeah, it's a seven o'clock or six thirty sometimes, yeah. But I mean, the overnight is like after midnight is overnight, is counted as overnight.
Right, right, right.
If we allow any like outside customer um come in and drop the truck, even if it's twenty-four hours, if we tell them, wait until it gets to the next day and then drop it, then I'm not sure uh if it get, if um kind of bypasses the definition of overnight parking. But um they wouldn't be happy, but I mean, it's it's up to the board. But still, sometimes they can come at ten thirty P M or eleven P M or midnight. They can drop and then they drop the keys and then they, you know, take a picture and then send it to the headquarters. They complete the return, that's how they figure out, and that's how it runs.
And if that's the case, if that, if that's the case that they're dropping, say, at ten thirty at night, make sure you have an empty space for them.
Yeah, usually um on the right side where the six and seven is, we leave it empty.
And that would be within the total, so that you have maximum of six that you're controlling and then your late night random
Max- maximum eight, eight people, and maybe plus two. So we could be, sometimes it could be ten.
Oh, that's a lot, I was hearing six plus two.
No, eight is the safe range, two vehicles behind the building, six vehicles on the left side. No, eight is the safe range, two vehicles behind the building, six vehicles on the left side. So one, two, three, four, five, but there technically there's another vehicle between four and five. And then the eight, it it can be split into two.
On that diagram, so you're up to ten.
Yeah, 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 so technically eight vehicles for safety, safely we can store. And then um, sometimes people come in in the late, they find a big space on the right side, so. They can leave the vehicle there, then the next day, next morning, we come and we kind of move around and see. To make a turnaround and then so that um, can be ready for the rental.
All right. I was hoping to hear six plus two and you're telling me eight plus two. Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, so, eh eh, Bill, could we put that diagram back up again? If 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 I remember correctly.
See it?
Uh, so what the petitioner was asking for is. So is where, so Pump Island, Pumpa, so where six and seven is labeled now. Is that the area that's over the tanks?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, si- six is over the tanks, seven is just um, there's no tanks.
Okay, okay. But. So if you said eight and then two more that come in overnight, where are those two more gonna go?
Under seven location, like it's seven, position seven.
I I was just, I'm just thinking out loud for a moment. I I'm 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 not saying that restriction has to be six, maybe it's eight. But if you had, is there a way to make where seven is located? To have a couple of spaces there, maybe one right behind the other that's designated. And and painted, labeled right on the ground, short term parking only, or or something so that. People know that that's the only place that extra vehicles can go. I don't know if that helps or not, but. Uh, I I I mean, I'd like to see it be six, and then you can have two more brings you up to eight. But if we had eight and two more brings you to ten, there's gotta be a logical way to do that, so they. Don't just end up anywhere in the parking lot. There has to be a designated, painted, striped area where. You know, a potential renter would know where to put the truck.
Yeah, and this diagram is getting beat up quite a bit with these numbers and changes. And you can fit three trucks where it says four and five. I'm wondering if the petitioner wants to clean up this diagram and help us understand where things. Really will be, including the return zone, and then come back. And explain that to us in more detail, because once we commit this to writing and it's got some fuzziness in it. Guaranteed the fuzziness will change.
So, Board, if I'm understanding, or Paul, uh, and again, apologizing for my artwork, um, but it. You're you're ass, oh wait, Paige, is your hand raised? I'm sorry.
Um, I have, thank you, Bill, and Mr. Chair, I was just wondering, I was kind of sketching out what was being described. I was wondering if I could just share my screen, just in recognition of the fact this is a continued hearing due to technical difficulties from the last time, so. I don't want to push anyone into deciding today if they feel they they need more time, but.
Let you share, Paige.
Okay.
Let's see here, how do I do it?
And it's also very. Thank you, let's see. Um, where is the share button? I just saw, here it is, share screen. Um, share, okay, I think everyone should be able to see that. It's pretty rough. I think this was the general concept was six cars here, two back here, and then a. One or or this is just showing one, but one overflow spot that's off the tank for any late night. Drop offs that were not originally anticipated, but please feel free to correct me if I'm, if I misunderstood.
Yes, you're correct. On the right side, actually, there're like two cars, two trucks can fit in.
Two cars, okay.
Yeah, not not that way.
Not that, right here?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I don't know how to.
Oh, just hit the, um, there you go.
All right, and these are all the standard size, or are these the big boys?
Well, even big one can fit in there, the twenty-six footers. But the the other size, I mean, they can uh, just fit in, no problem.
All right, so you're you're petitioning us to do eight plus two?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the other question, I I wanna think on that while we deal with the other issue here. And that is to try to make the downtown overlay people happy. And and what I think the issue is that we can offer is some kind of. I wouldn't call it a privacy fence, but some kind of a disruptor to the vision of people seeing all those trucks in the back. And along Waltham Street, it's sort of a cliff edge with overgrown junk on it. And on the Jiffy Loop side, it's a chain link fence that somebody has backed into too many times. So. That to me was something that could be cleaned up to some extent to get to Leslie's a question of a while ago. So is that something you're ready to to deal with, to put in some some uh. Not privacy fence, but some vision obscuring fence?
So that was the question, um. Uh, because we're um. You know, if the like permanent improvement has to be done, I have to ask the landlord owner, getting. If it's not, then I can probably do not major construction, but um, somewhat. Um, beautification or something like that. But I'd like to know what the board really want me to do.
What I would like you not to do is block the vision from the street. As somebody is pulling out of your gas station or pulling out at uh, Jiffy Loop. And having a a solid fence right up to the sidewalk going towards the stoplight there. Because that that could be a hazard. So I, that's something I don't want, but something to make it. Less of an industrial zone with one parking lot next to another parking lot, it's it's a struggle because it is. A Jiffy Loop parking lot against your parking lot.
Yes.
And that's all it is, is two parking lots with an old busted chain link fence between them. And a a weed infested chain link fence against Waltham Street on the side. And so, I don't know, I'm not thinking of anything major, but something that is. Uh, looking like it's maintained, is the way I would phrase it. Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, what I've had done at a lot of different, you know, condo properties, larger properties to screen things off is just putting in the. Uh, you know, vinyl coated chain link fence with the with the sl- the privacy slats in them. And that's all there is, vinyl slats, just makes you so you can't see through them. It just, it blocks, and you could put that on the Jiffy Loop side and on the Waltham Street side. And to your point, Paul, you don't want that fence to come all the way down to the sidewalk between. The the gas station and Jiffy Loop, because you'd end up with a blind spot, people couldn't see. But but, you know, using that type of uh, fencing is perfect for blockage and not overly expensive.
That's with the strips?
Yeah, yeah, privacy slats in it, yeah.
So, so if I may, um, as the business owner and. Customer of the gas station, whenever I get gas and then when I am pulling out of the station, I really appreciate. I can see through the fence, because the cars are waiting on the Waltham Street, because that's the most dangerous intersection. A lot of car accident there, so if we don't see what blockage or anything like that. I'm not sure for the beautification, we trade off some safety concerns too. We like to see the Jiffy Loop side too, the chain fence looks not the best. But I can see through all the way down to um, the little strip mall there. So I don't wanna, as Paul mentioned, I don't want to block the vision, I like to keep it as see-through. But for the pedestrian exposure, we've been thinking like what to do instead of sacrificing. You know, the um. Um, the see-through like for safety check, because a lot of people. Our gas station is open to um, the quick turn people too, like they come in from the seven eleven side. And then they just rush into the gas station and turn out, going the other way down to um, not the Acton side, but the other side. So some, sometimes police officers sits there and then they sometimes pull over, but you know, I think they get a lot of resistance. From them, because it's not valid uh, stop for them, but I mean, that's something what's happening here. They, yeah, just like that vehicle, the fence is kind of leaning toward, because of Jiffy Loop. The big tanker truck comes in here, so that they can get so um, the used oils and stuff like that. Sometimes that truck back into this chain, we um, we kind of witnessed once. So we we um, we're not, uh, we kind of. Good to have the fence there at least, so that uh, when they hit it, the driver puts on the notice that they, you know, they too close to. Um, the vehicle here, so. Um, what I can do is like, we researched some other chain fans like this, and then um. Um, there's some way to like weaving through the chains. Then if it, it, that's good for looking good, but still that blocks the vision, so I'm not sure. How we have to do it.
Well, the 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 corner Powdermelon Waltham is a light. There's a stoplight there, and 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 this particular fence goes to the to the end. I'm not, I I checked with DPW and they're okay with that or something close to, you know, that. The other side where we have um. Where we have the smaller fence, now that's set back here a little bit right now, as you see right here. So sh- i- if if a a fence with a um. You know, it's, it was opaque or something like that, or had some sort of screening on it. It was maybe a six footer going here might soften that view a lot and not block the uh, the vision here coming out.
So if I can ask, uh, uh, don't move, Bill.
Okay.
If if I can ask the applicant, that truck that's parked there. Is that in the far back corner and you would put the other one behind that one?
No, that's the corner, number one.
That, okay, so there would be another one towards the street from that one in your.
Yes. That doesn't really come out of the the front of the building.
All right.
So that any any customer pulling out of the gas station can see through incoming outgoing traffics. Before they pull into the powder mirror.
All right, Bill, if you could rotate your image a little bit to the right, please. A little bit more, yeah, a little bit more. Stop right there. Now, where you're talking about the fence on the Waltham Street side. You've got a whole bunch of random non-maintained shrubberies in this picture, and if Bill. One step further towards the corner, all those shrubberies disappear. One more. Oh, they were, oh, that was all taking the same time. You had another image there where it was.
Yeah, they're all cut down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so who maintains that? There you go.
This is, DDPW is here, this is town land on the other side of the fence.
On on the on the BP side of the fence?
No.
Cause all those shrubberies on the BP side of the fence. See, that's all on BP side.
Um, that's uh, from town. Yeah.
And so, in in this beautification downtown overlay pedestrian usefulness stuff. I would focus more on this side to clean that up, make it look presentable.
That's technically that grows from the town land.
Is it all town stuff?
Yeah, whatever is overgrown to our side, we um, we cut it with trimming. We, I've seen once, the town cut everything, uh, maybe last year or I think they do annually or biannual.
Huh, okay, that's news, I didn't know that.
Yeah, we were wondering, this outside of fence, so I tell me and my people that, hey, let's clean. Because if you look at inside, sometimes we had the flower bed, I mean, there's watering problems, so we couldn't survive it. But that's how we cut it and we kind of trim everything and then we um, collect all the garbage is from there, because people throw it. Then we keep it clean.
All right.
And those are all four foot fences there, I I I checked, uh, I didn't walk that, so.
So, Bill, as far as a fence is, is simply putting this, you know, straighten the fence where the truck's back into it. But is simply using that fence and putting the the colored slats in it enough for your. Uh, pedestrian experience?
In my opinion, four feet is not sufficient to screen the vehicles. I would go to six foot.
All right, Jerry, what do you got?
Every place that I've done, I've done six foot, um. Uh, you know, coated fencing and with the uh, with the with the poly slats in it. Um, they're almost indestructible, well, except when the truck backs in with that, that'll destroy it. But I would also do it, I replace the one between you and Jiffy Loop and go out just as far as that one is right now. Don't need, don't need to go any further than that, and I would take the Waltham Street side. Because in my opinion, I'd go out with a with a chainsaw and cut all that shrubbery down. I don't care who owns it, it looks terrible. But put a new fence up there, six foot with the slats. And bring it, except for the last two lengths of it, don't have the slats put in. So you're giving vision to the intersection, so when you're pulling in or pulling out, you can always see the intersection. Cause I don't, I I agree, I do not want to see a safety issue where a driver uh, said, well, I couldn't see out. I couldn't see the car coming around the corner at the light from Waltham Street, they were taking a right on red, I didn't see them. This way here, it gives you each length of six feet, gives you twelve feet of clear vision. Uh, so the rest of it will all have the 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 privacy slats, the last two lengths will not. That's what I do, and all six foot fencing.
And that would screen the majority of the vehicles that were coming in where they're being proposed to be parked.
Yeah, that's what I'd suggest, that screens most everything.
And across the front, you know, what do you see? You see the back end of the trucks. And you're just gonna leave it exposed, no, no camouflage across the front. All right, so we have a, we have an idea for that. So now I want to put it all together into a package, how many trucks? Less than twenty-five thousand GVW are we considering to put into the special permit? Less than twenty-five thousand. Overnight outdoor parking. Somebody want to toss up a number here?
No more than ten.
Okay. Any outdoor parking of a commercial vehicle greater than twenty-five thousand. Cause if we say no, then any drop off he has has to be dealt with during that same day.
Yeah, and that's not gonna happen, if they come in at ten at night, uh, there's nobody there.
Unless he's not an acceptable drop off for the big boys.
True.
And that's his risk if he accepts one bigger than twenty-five thousand and we had said no.
Right, and that was what he discussed earlier too, the fact that, you know, he can restrict that. But then Joe comes with his truck, and it's the big truck, and. But then Joe comes with his truck and it's the big truck and well, this is the closest place to me. I just unloaded. I'm gonna drop it off here. I'm I'm not driving to X Y Z to drop it off unbeknownst to the owner uh that evening. Uh so now the owner's in violation. I'm not looking for an excuse, but just kind of elaborating on what you've already said.
Perhaps a condition could be created that any vehicle returned shall be first of all placed behind the screen, you know, in an opaque green area, but secondly shall be removed within twenty-four hours. If it's um, so it doesn't constitute a day there, you know, and it.
We give him a one night grace period.
Well, I don't, I mean, Brian, do you see that as a feasible uh condition? They um there's a separate permit required for vehicles over twenty-five thousand if we're gonna be storing them there. If they're not gonna store them, they're just gonna return them, use them for return and get them out of there. I think it's totally reasonable and in the spirit of the bylaws to, you know, say, okay, get it out of there in twenty-four hours. We don't want to have vehicles uh left out in the daytime where they're gonna be visible. Every vehicle is gonna be behind, you know, in the screened area. The the delivery vehicles come back or the delivered vehicles come back at night. Uh if there's one that's over, you know, that site, you got, it's gotta be out within twenty-four hours and it's gotta be screened until then.
I agree. I agree with what Bill just said. I like that idea.
So we're asking Brian if he thinks it's a legitimate condition, right, Bill?
Heck yeah.
So, I mean, your bylaw doesn't say, if you're, I may respond to that. Um, your bylaw doesn't really put a lot of um strictures on your ability to condition the grant of the special permit. So if you feel that it's consistent with the exercise of your discretion and it addresses the concerns that you have in a reasonable way, uh I don't have any issue with it. Whether or not it's a appropriate condition or or not, that's really up for the board to decide as a policy matter. But I don't think there's anything legally problematic about it. It's just whether or not you feel that it's, you know, an appropriate exchange. So my my catchphrase sometimes is if you're asking for extraordinary relief, you may get extraordinary conditions. And so I see you trying to be creative to solve a problem. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think there's a lot right with that.
So the pro, the question I had, Brian, the the where I really was um, I I I'm curious. I wanted it to be clear, this board is not permitting vehicles to be, you know, it's not allowing overnight storage of rental vehicles that are over twenty, unless they want to. I mean, but presumably they don't, over twenty-five thousand square feet, uh twenty-five thousand gross. You, you know what I mean? Twenty-five thousand. And um that would be the distinction. It's not allowing that. It's saying that you've got, if they're returned here, you gotta get rid of them. Be just like somebody parking for gas theoretically. Okay. So.
And so you're getting ahead of something, right? And so if you set a cap and on some particular evening the cap has exceeded, you're telegraphing what you want to see happen. So it's, I don't see any problem with that.
Uh, Mr. Chair, also, uh we may have some public comment, I think, too, when you're ready. Oh, sorry.
Yep, so question, so could could it be phrased in a way that no more than eight in that standard overnight's area in the back left-hand side? And no more than two on the drop off area on the right-hand side? Cause those two, even if they were the over twenty-five, they could still fit there.
Yeah, but we have two two permit requirements. One is for vehicles under and one is was over. So we need to put a number on each one.
Right. So my thought was it would only be no more than two on that drop off side because those two big ones, he's gonna get rid of as fast as he can.
Right, and so we would say two over twenty-five thousand max and eight under twenty-five thousand max.
But the big ones he has to get rid of within twenty-four hours, right?
We we could write that in as a condition, yeah.
It would, couldn't it be a ten, twenty-five hundred or less if the two small ones were dropped off overnight in that area instead of two big ones?
We could be as imaginative as we can. But my worry is we're never gonna catch them all.
No, but we could have a one-year check-in period like we do. We do that quite a bit with other permits. We say, okay, if this is a disaster and like they're all over the place and there's semis being parked and all this stuff. You you we say we come back, we make it, it the the part of the uh condition is the applicant return within a year at a regularly posted hearing. We just check in. We do that with, I do that downtown with a lot of businesses.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna make this an indefinite one. I I we need to put it a one-year kind of number on it and say, come back and talk to us more. I'll have feedback at that point. Now, Bill reminded me of um protocol, and we have people here that we have not been talking with. And I want to ask if there are any people willing to speak in favor of this application? Nobody willing to speak in favor? Is there anybody interested in speaking in opposition to this application? Is there anyone interested in making a comment of any sort relative to this application? Go ahead, Bill.
Word, Blaine. Um, I was just thinking that if there was a commitment to maintain a little town piece of land that looks like crap all the time, that would go a long way in increasing the pedestrian experience.
Oh, that's a good point. Oh, could you identify yourself, please?
Yep, Bill Crenshaw, Mockingbird Lane.
Thank you.
And you're saying, you know, let let me clarify, Bill. You were saying that the applicant here should clean up that town piece of land?
I was saying that to me would imply an improvement in the pedestrian experience if they committed to cleaning that up and maintaining it clean.
Okay.
Would that be agreeable to you, uh, Mr. Chang?
But that's um, I have no legal right and um that's town land. Sometimes town people come and cut everything. I don't know why this is not happening this year yet, so if they have regular schedule to cut all the weeds, I mean, that's what we like the most. But um what I can do is I can pro, anyways, we're trimming all the overgrown branches from outside. And then um probably we can just cut it not to grow over the fence and not too much sticking out to the the sidewalk. Because I mean, the way it says like maintain or clean is very subjective and I don't really know how can I please ten or twenty pedestrians who walks down there? Um, so if we can put some more definitive um terms, then you know, I can probably think about it, but otherwise when I do the landscaping or just cutting from my side, I can probably do um the cleanups um what I do from my premises.
Okay, that that's a, that's a good response. I appreciate that, Mr. Chang. Chris Austinall has his hand up. Chris?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chris Arsenal, thirty-four Parker Street. Um, uh, just pulling from my planning board experience, uh, I find that um sometimes applicants can have a stronger application uh in the downtown if they have uh landscape plans that are produced so that the that can get reviewed by the town and understand where the plantings will occur. Um, perhaps in this case landscaping could could be along the some of the fence lines or um sort of the exterior portions of the property that could also include tree plantings. I think, I don't know the practicality of tree plantings on this site, but I think it would um, if there is an opportunity to plant trees, these are, this is a town goal. Um, and I think that it could make it a uh stronger stronger application if if we could um, if we could figure that part out. Um, thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman and the board.
Thank you very much, Chris. So if we look at that Waltham Street side where you have some some overgrown shrubs that look like they're on your side of the fence and the lawn that's primarily on your side of the fence, except right at the curve at the corner, which looks like it's on the town side of the fence. I think the the point that Chris made is a good one, that the majority of that green stuff in that picture. Now go back to the first one there, Bill. Back up one picture. Yeah, it looks like the majority of that green stuff is on your land. Is that right?
Well, you know, because um sometimes we have a trimmer and uh with cutter, so we kind of maintains the lawns inside the fence. And then um we trace down this this one and the roots are right there outside the fence. Some, and then it grows in.
Yeah. Well, a landscaping person would be able to deal with that if not routinely, perhaps once and for all, to make it, you know, manageable kind of shrubberies. So.
So I mean, my question is, when, like in the past year, when the town cut this one, um if they do it again and then I'll make a picture and then I'll see, you know, uh I'll see, so the next year when I come back for for the hearing, I can make a propose to like what I do and then what I will do for um this side, but not for now. Um, we planted some like perennials, but because the watering issue and then the land itself is very um like a steep there, so it doesn't really contain water. So we kind of let it um just go away and then just keep it, keep the lawn there. But we kind of cut everything, you know, whatever intertwined chains. But we don't see the root, so it grows out. And then we're thinking to cut off whatever overgrown um over the fence. Cause it looks very uncontrolled, but.
Sure.
Yeah, but when the town did it, everything was clear.
I can say that the town, in 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 terms of uh DPW work, you know, it's sporadic and it's not, it's certainly not gonna keep, you know, they're not gonna be there every week keeping it tight.
Yeah.
Uh, can I, uh, uh, board, is the, just so we can keep um, keep my notes tidy. Um, are we saying, do, is the fence, is a chain leak fence something the board wants to see or are they not sure about that still? And they're looking at chain link fence with landscaping or plantings or uh is there any sort of consensus on it yet? Are we still working through that?
I have not, I have not pulled for consensus. I'm trying to get an option that might work. We haven't gone on it yet because we're, we have two things we're juggling, Bill. And in my crazy way of running the meeting tonight, I'm trying to do both at the same time. One is the number of vehicles and the other is to make it look pretty. And and we're we're nudging both of them forward sort of zigzag like. Cause we haven't made any motions yet. We haven't made any straw poles. We're just trying to understand what the client is willing to do and should do. So, I mean, that that's my soapbox. Chris, you still have your hand up. Is is that new or is that not taken down? All right, we saw another hand go up. Danny, what? I think I think I'm gonna ask you to speak cause your hand's up, Danny.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name's Danny Schisler. I live at thirty Parker Street, uh probably less than a thousand feet away from this gas station. Um, I I would ask, uh, along with the landscape improvements discussed, whether some uh trees could be pa- uh planted along that strip. I would just say that, you know, this is um a pretty large expanse of pavement. Uh, and I think we're all familiar with the effects of uh heat island effect and the impacts on the town, especially in a dense urban center. So I would ask whether uh some kind of canic canopy could be established along that strip. Um, it might help with erosion and moisture retention and it would certainly help with uh view sheds once the trees were allowed to establish. Um, I I do understand the proponents' issues with, you know, retaining water and making sure plants can establish there. I would say any any landscaping company, you know, worth their weight can uh have a one or two-year maintenance period and and water trees to establishment. Um, so that would just be my suggestion. Um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, Paul, um, the one thing, I I I guess I, I've been by there a number. I I live right up the street off of Waltham Street, uh so I go by it multiple times a day. And most of what's growing on that side by the fence is from the town side growing through the fence. It's all wild. There's nothing I don't think was ever planted. Uh, it's mostly wild growth. And uh I would defend the applicant in this that when he cuts on his side, uh you find the roots are coming from the from the town side. If he were to install a screening fence that we're top potentially talking about, this wild growth is there now will ruin his fence within one to two years.
Yes.
Uh, so, you know, you, it's gonna be one or the other. You could put a fence and you could put some small shrubs there that could be maintained. But I think to try to put a tree or trees, even low growing trees, I think might be a bit of a problem. Uh, just my personal opinion. I'd go with the fence, screening and uh maybe some, you know, low uh small growth shrubs. That's it.
So we're looking at this picture here that Bill has up. I see the curve of the sidewalk with grass. That, I my guess, is town grass. But now as the fence curves around, where is the fence line in this image? Is it where way over at the edge of the sidewalk? Is it halfway through?
It's right here.
Okay, so there is literally about three, four feet of town shrubberies that the applicant has to deal with coming through the fence.
Correct.
And so is one of the potential outcomes of this is to have the town fix no man's land that they own?
Bill, if you move up Waltham Street a little bit, you can see it better from. Yeah.
See, I thought the fence was right against the sidewalk there. Yeah, isn't the fence right up tight to the sidewalk?
Pretty tight.
That's why I say there's not much room to.
Yeah, not much room for trees, it's true.
So on on the applicant's side, he's got all that grass and that's like five feet of grass, right? Or more? So where where is the town trees getting in? It's just this one ugly thing right there?
Here, I guess, yeah. And here, this is a, it looks like there's a little, a very minimal strip, I see, yeah. And up here.
So if he replaces that fence, they're gonna have to dig some holes and get rid of the junk in the way of putting the fence in too. Yeah, that that's all his his stuff, not town stuff.
Take a walk down there, you'll find that a lot of that is, it doesn't show it in this photo. But if you were to take a look at that today, walk down there tonight. That's fully overgrown.
But overgrown which way, Jerry?
It appears to be coming from the street side, just on the very edge. Granted, it's there's only maybe a foot, but it's coming from there and it grows in the direction of the fence. Doesn't grow out to the sidewalk, grows towards the gas station.
If a condition was put on, then if that does look very, very like there's a minimal area there. If a condition was placed. That the fence is there, and applicant just maintains that exterior there, it's, we're talking about weed whacking and and I mean, you know. It's not a lot. There, that would be a possibility the board might consider.
Weed whacking which? The town stuff?
Yeah. I mean, just maintaining, you know, that it's free, if you got a new fence, it just looks, it proves the corner and then we could, the downtown overlay district. Criteria is met. It it's screened, it the applicant gets. Pretty much is what he wanted in terms of numbers of of trucks. The town has a softened view when we're arriving on either end of the cultural district. We know that there's, you know, sightline issues on the Jiffy Lube side, aside, but the. The new fence would would. Screen it somewhat without jeopardizing safety.
So who owns the curb? In this picture, who owns that second curb and why is there a curb there?
Don't know.
Is that an erosion curb?
Oh, no.
Does funnel any sidewalk water down instead of watering the trees that aren't there? Or should be there? I'm thinking if if you get a company to come in and replace that fence. They're going to want to clean that up.
Sure.
Can they take that curb out and clean it up?
I don't know, that's DPW question, it might be, I'm going to assume that's DPW.
Jerry.
Yeah, in my background, I'm suggesting, I mean, you know, Justin would have to answer that technically. But that curb belongs at a town, that I mean, I'm I'm a hundred and one percent of that.
And then how close is the is the posts and the fence? To that curb, it looks like they're right up tight to it.
Yeah, it might be about a foot, I mean, I've not really, you know, walked and stood and measured it, but. It's pretty close, yeah, you're right.
And so if that's the case, all that is green is the applicant's.
So the applicant will put up a new fence and then the applicant, like you would do to your own fence in your own yard. You'd weed whack the inside of it and you'll weed whack the outside of it, so you'd come along and. Even though maybe the outside may technically be on town property. It's abutting your fence. So if you keep after it and it's just weeds and you're just weed whacking it, it should be, as Bill indicated. Pretty simple. But all that's got to be dug out of there now, though. That's going to all be gone.
It's a mess now, you know, if you dig out to replace that fence, you're going to take the foundation out from the curb. Loosen the curb.
Yeah, that I don't know what it's looking like right up against that curb, I don't know, have to. Yeah, I don't know how that was poured.
Yeah, you got asphalt on the right curb and then that looks like a stone curb there in the middle.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. I think we have what we need to make decisions on. So. There's two pieces to this. The number of trucks and the landscaping. And I'm thinking. That if the applicant takes care of the landscaping, the fence and. Maybe putting some shrubberies or is that one neighbor suggested some real trees? Then we look at the 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 number of trucks and if it's better screened. It's an easier decision for ten trucks total. Eight plus two of the big boys. Does that make sense? Am I am I on the right track? John is nodding. Leslie is humming.
Do you want to show your your drawings or your renderings?
Who are you asking?
Uh, Gia.
Yes.
Chang, do you want to show your your renderings that you sent me?
Yes.
Okay, you want me to bring them up?
Yes.
Share. Share. Oh, that's not it. That's not it. Let's see, that's not it. What do I do here? Oh, what do I do? All right, let's try this again. Where? Yeah. Right. All right, can you see that?
No.
No.
Try again.
All right.
Oh, that's better. We're seeing something, is that what you want?
Yes. Next slide.
No, no, that's, I don't think we want that. Are there easier options for the fence?
I think these are just, it's just, we're not sure about what has been done to screen fences. And I think that the applicant was, you know. Hoping to get some ideas, which we've gotten tonight from the board. These are all ideas for just artwork within the fence, here's what Jerry's talking about with the privacy.
The weaving.
The weaving.
Well, that brings up an interesting point as to what color. And you've got some pretty strong imagery there. And you want something that stands out and say, hey, look at me? Or do you want to use the BP color scheme? Or do you want to be subtle? I mean, to me, my 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 impression, what I'd like to see is something subtle.
So basically, we're thinking like the the picture across the street. The town like it decorates, stuff like that. Yeah, and then we can have some artists or art school people so that they can put their artwork. Just like that, you know, using like the weaving or the streams, like how they decorate it. So that seasonally they can change and they come, they they can watch and enjoy. I mean, in the meantime, I can, you know, just landscaping from my side and any outgrowing weeds. The shrubs outside, probably we can just cut it. So that. There's nothing much burden us, but make. Like a pleasure to the people who walk down the street and they see some artwork. Then they see, oh, this is the very distinctive points of this town when they see it. I mean, that's basically how we thought, like instead of having all the same fences. That is securing the business from outside, but that's detrimental to the business because we need to be exposed. But those kind of work will probably cooperate with people and, you know, they, instead of focusing on what's inside the gas station, but they can see some work. On the fence and then so long as we can maintain the weeds, stuff like that, and I think it will serve the purpose too.
Right, my response, just my first gut response, it's an honest response, I want to tell you here. Is when when you were flipping through those very strong colored images. And. My concern would be that's extremely distracting to a car going down Waltham Street. And I would not want to have something that distracts me at all as I'm approaching one of the big intersections of town.
So that's that's just simple.
Yeah, I would, my my opinion, if we wanted to talk about what that is to look like. I would prefer to have a dull color, almost a camouflage color, dull greens, dull grays. Something like that, that does not call your attention that there's anything right there. Yeah, you've got your signs up above it, that's fine because that draws attention to you. What I what I'm talking about is, you know, that that head turner of, you know, you had those tulips or other cute flower images there. It's like, whoa, what's that? No, I shouldn't.
No, that was a sample thrown in, but. It's a PP, the green color is the main color, so maybe the greenish. You know, that will be the main color for that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I see a hand up, we're still, we're still in general discussion, so I'll take your question, Danny, your comment.
Thank you. There might be an obvious answer to this, but I'm wondering, why not just remove that existing fence entirely? Not put a new fence in there and save the owner from having to deal with weeds growing up a fence. And just green it with trees and shrubs. It would probably look a lot nicer, really a four foot high or three foot high fence is not hiding anything, you still know there's a VP and a bunch of U-Hauls behind that fence. And rather than having to look at something colorful and artificial as you drive down that road. Every day, as I do, you'd instead get to look at trees and shrubs.
I I like that comment because I I sort of had it in the back of my mind too, but I I didn't. I didn't say it. So I'm glad you said it. That what we want to do is make it look pretty for the neighborhood. And trees and shrubs tend to do that better than an industrial fence.
No question about that on on the Waltham Street side, that that is, that is.
Right.
The the question comes in that. The purpose of them is twofold, I I agree that landscaping is and and the trees are. The more the better and trying to do that, but they also have to serve the purpose of of somewhat at least softening the view of the back. Part, the reason we got, the reason we're here is because of complaints about. You know, commercial vehicles parked in back that were visible, so if the if the landscaping could be done, which it absolutely could be, I mean, if it was done. In a way that at least it's not going to obscure completely, of course not. But it will, but it could soften it for sure on the on the Waltham Street side. I think we're stuck with a fence on the other side. Or something.
Yeah, and and as far as the landscaping. I've had experience with these green shrubberies. Arborvitae, I think they call them. It's an evergreen. You can get them. Maybe fifty bucks a tree, you can put them five feet apart. And just make a wall of that on his grassy stuff. As as one option. And those will grow, depending, you can get tall skinny ones, you can get short fat ones. You know, that'll intermingle and so on. I mean, that that to me is, if we're talking landscaping. That that'd be an evergreen rather than a tall. What do you call it? Decision, is that the word? When they when they leave their leaves over the winter. So I mean, that that's an option too. And if we did that, Bill, that means we don't have to worry about the fence if you've got a wall of greenery. Is that right? Does that, does that make your town beautification work?
I think that landscaping that's done correctly on that would produce. They'd make it look splendid. I, we, as long as, my only caveat would be that we're understanding that the reason is both to green. The area, but also but to soften. The view of trucks back there, and I think we could do it both, the applicant could do them both. If something and and perhaps a way to do it would be take. At this point, you know, the applicant has some tools and some ideas to go away with and come up. With something that might work, it might be as simple as calling in a professional. A landscaper to come in and just say, hey, what can I do here? And they probably do this all the time. And on the Jiffy Lube side. I don't know if there's, I don't think there's a lot of options area, you know, you guys could figure out what you want to do with that. Replacing that seems to be the. And that's seems like it would be a path forward to get everybody pretty much. Where they want to be.
So, which brings up an interesting question. If we get a landscaper to give the applicant some suggestions. And let them decide which is choice one or two for us to. Review and determine, that's not happening tonight. And and so are we looking at a continuance for him to do some homework and come back to us with a. Formal proposal as to what that fence would look like?
Before you do, is Danny still on?
Yes, he is.
Oh, yeah, okay, there's, Danny, can you hear me? Danny, can you hear me? Oh, maybe he comes back, I was gonna, I was gonna say that the tree committee may also be able to offer some suggestions if there are plantings going there, what would be? And I think Danny is on the tree committee, are you?
You are, Leslie, aren't you?
Oh, Leslie.
No, I used to be, but Danny and I are both members of the Tree Corps and they have. You know, suggestions for urban trees. So yeah, I think Danny, I think the Tree Committee could definitely be a help on this.
So Jerry, you were going to make a comment?
Yeah, I I'm all for trees and Arborvitae was a perfect idea. Problem is, I'm going to have to wait a few, so you know, maybe maybe a landscaper can come up with a way that we could have something that's at least. To my point of the fence, at least six foot tall and blocks the view of the of the trucks. Not is three foot tall. And by the time I'm eighty six years old. Which is only a few years away, then it'll be six feet tall and I won't be able to see that, so I'm I'm not negative to put in the trees. As long as whatever goes there. One is maintained, because this is a maintenance thing, whereas the fence with the slats is a, I've done a ton of them, zero maintenance effectively. But put the trees up as long as they're going to block. That's fine.
Yeah, you can get Arborvitae, three, four, five, six feet.
Yeah.
And they they will soften immediately, even if they're. Shorter, they're going to soften the look, whereas of one of those fences is just more adding more urban looking. Scrap, I think they're really ugly. It doesn't soften the look at all.
True, no, I I agree, they'll have to do something with the landscape on the on the edge of that. Hill, because the hill is pretty steep on that, the grade going down, so they're going to have to regrade that. That area to put anything in that's going to.
So, yeah, that's good. The applicant has a question here, go ahead.
Yes, I I'd just like to add one thing that our lease to the land ends. Twenty twenty seven. So we're not sure what Getty would do after that. So if Getty decides to let us stay there longer, then maybe everything, you know, should be. Done by like what we talk about here. But if it's not, then Getty might convert it to some other things so they can propose to the planning board and then zoning builder pills. So that's one thing I'd like to add, because our lease ends twenty twenty seven.
But if they change something to another use. Or it would stay a gas station or whatever. You're, it's still a good chance it'll be in front of either us or the planning board to make any change. And so you you're investing in their future.
Right, so the lease is up then, you know, we're just out, then. I'm not sure who's going to run the gas station, but. Getty might come back and do their own business.
Yeah, that's sad to hear that, because it sounds like you really want to make it work. So. What we have in front of us is I I want to see. A more organized map of where the trucks would be parked, so we could include that in the decision. And I want to hear from landscapers or whoever Mr. Chang can find to discuss what a good. Blurring thing would be on that Waltham side. Waltham Street side. So to me, that's a continuance. And if Mr. Chang can get those together for us for the next meeting. Which would be maybe a month from now if we've got anything.
August twenty sixth is our next.
Okay. So what we're looking for is. A map for where you would put those ten trucks. So what we're looking for is a map for where you would put those ten trucks, eight plus two. And probable options, one, two, and maybe a third option for the screening. You know, two types of screening between you and Jiffy Lube and then along the side. And in the interim, also, I would give, uh, Bill an assignment. To talk to DPW and confirm where the town line is there. And what they, what options they have when they tear that fence down and clean it up. Uh, to the curb, what options to protect the curb or whose curb is it and stuff like that. Does that make sense, guys?
Yeah, I would say that one thing that would help the applicant, also the, um, Leslie, um, could you, um. Put Mr. Chang, if he wishes to reach out about with the Tree Corps or anything about types. Trees, if he need, I don't know if he wants to, but if he wanted to, but I, can I put him in contact?
Yes.
And then, uh, cause the, you know, we do have a, uh, we have a town board. Uh, and we also have a, 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 a residence committee for trees that might be of help. Or, you know, so you have healthy plantings in there. Now, they will not, they don't have the trees, so that'd be something you wanna, you know, you might wanna just call a landscaper and does it, you know, that's a possibility, but.
Yeah, if you, um, if I have his email. Um, we can be in touch and I can put him in touch with, uh. Um, the Tree Corps and also, um, the Tree Committee.
Okay, so we have a plan? Yeah, it looks like we have a plan. The only thing is we don't have a vote. So I need a motion and then we'll do the vote kinda stuff. Who's gonna make my motion for me?
But to make a motion to, uh, continue. This hearing until, uh, the August twenty-sixth meeting?
Yep. Jerry seconds. And the continuance is for the items previously mentioned, the three items. The, the truck map, landscaping dialogue. And Bill for the town, uh, DPW to figure out. How to preserve that sidewalk curb, if indeed it is theirs and so on and so forth. So. John, yes, no?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well. So we're continuing this hearing until next month. So I appreciate your, your patience, Mr. Chang, and, and we'll see you in a month and then we can hopefully wrap it up.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much. Now, we have another hearing in front of us. And we have heard nothing, is that right, Bill?
Nothing.
She, I did see her on, but she seems to have dropped off again.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Uh, who let her in? Bill, you, you normally let people in, right?
No, I didn't see her and I saw Mary Jo in.
Oh, that's who I saw, sorry, Bill.
Oh, she's in the butter. I see, somebody did call me here.
Excuse me, um, am I done?
We appreciate your time and we're on the next case, so you, you can sign off, which, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, no, I have nothing. Would you like to, uh, continue that and I'll figure out what it is, what happened?
We have spent so much effort on this case. Yeah, we should probably continue it. I don't wanna kill it right now, cause we've got so much invested in it to come out, make it work right. So. I'll open it and then we continue. So the next public hearing we have tonight is one powder mill, no, sorry. The next public hearing we have is six Glendale Street, continued from June twenty-sixth. The ZBA will consider the application submitted by Joanne Morales, two nineteen Bishop Ave, Framingham. Subject property, six Glendale Street, mayor, pre-existing non-conforming structure in a business zoning district. The current use is auto detailing the shop, the applicant is proposing the use of auto repair. Because the structure is non-conforming due to insufficient frontage and setbacks of finding by the ZBA required by section five of the zoning bylaws. That the proposed use of an auto repair shop would be not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that, that is what was posted in the, uh, agenda. One of the main reasons that Brian is here is to help describe what we figured out, what we're really trying to do. But I don't know if we can even get into that without the applicant here.
If that question was directed at me, I agree. I, I wouldn't take any testimony, argument, evidence, deliberation. Without the applicant, uh, so we're gonna assume just for the, the sake of due process and good faith. That something unexpected happened tonight and the applicant will be here the next time. If that's not the case, well, then you have every reason to shift gears and. Take whatever action you think is appropriate for the applicant's failure to appear. And present their, their application on two separate nights. Uh, but for the time being, you know, we should, you know, view it in the best light, give them the benefit of the doubt. Um, and if you're gonna continue it to another night, we should discuss it no further.
All right. That, that'd be it and. Then I need a motion to continue again to August twenty-sixth, I believe is, right, Bill, our next meeting?
August twenty-sixth.
And is that a Monday?
Monday. That's our normal night. We've been Wednesdays and weird.
Yeah.
I don't know why, and, oh, cause of town meeting and it threw us off.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
Well, I don't wanna get into it, there's a, it threw our other dates too.
Fair enough.
I make a motion to continue the case of six Glendale Street until our regularly scheduled meeting of August twenty-sixth.
Second.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
I'll be a yes as well. So unanimous to continue. All right, disappointed because I wanted to deal with it and get it done. But now we have one more motion. Can somebody make the final motion of the night? Jerry?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Paige seconds. John?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well. Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, everybody, good job. Thank you, Brian.
Good night, folks.
Night, everybody.